You're watching CCN, Clarksville Community Network. Produced by Goodwin Productions. Powered by CDE Lightband.
Hello everyone and welcome to Clarksville's Political Forum. I'm Van Stokes, your moderator for today's session. And on behalf of Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce, we are glad you could be with us today. Once again, we are coming to you from the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center here in Clarksville. And as always, this forum is designed to give you, the voters, an informed choice when you go to the polls to vote in the federal, state, and city of Clarksville general election on Tuesday, November the 5th. In this session, we will have the opportunity to meet and talk with the candidates who will be on that ballot for the Clarksville City Council representing Ward Number Nine. To my left, they are Ms. Bridget Childs, Mr. Kamonte Epps, Mr. Jimmy Brown, and Mr. Rodney Davis. Now, we'll begin this session with each candidate having two minutes in which to present opening remarks. Following this segment, we'll then turn to our panelists for questions. Joining us as panelists today are Mr. Jay Alberta, Ms. Susan Zidek, and Mr. O'Neal Wiggins. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question from our panelists, with the first response coming in a rotating order. At the conclusion of the questioning, each candidate will then have two minutes in which to present closing statements. Closing remarks will be provided in reverse order from the opening comments. Our timekeeper for this session is Mr. Phil Harpel. The Clarksville City Council is comprised of 12 council members, each representing a different ward of the city. As I said, this is Ward Number Nine. Members are elected to a four-year term. The City Council votes on city ordinances and resolutions governing the city of Clarksville. It also approves the budget for the city and sets the city property tax rate. Council members approve changes to the city policies as specified in the city code. The council is also responsible for adopting potentially far-reaching policies and then ensuring that those policies are indeed followed. Each council member is appointed to serve on one or more committees that may include the Community and Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee, Gas and Water Committee, Parks and Recreation, Public Safety, Streets and Garage, and Transportation Committee. Without any further ado, let's go to our candidates now for their opening comments. We will hear first from Ms. Bridget Childs.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Bridget Childs. I am your candidate for Ward Nine City Council. And I hail from Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm a transplant here in Clarksville via the military. I am a 22-year Army veteran. I've been here for 20 years, and I've grown to love this city. I do a lot of outreach just on my own. I'm a member of Champions Christian Community Church where we are seated in the heart of Providence Boulevard where we are able to do much outreach out there. I am running on affordable housing, attainable affordable housing, and sustainability. We have a lot of people that have come to know homelessness unfortunately very well since 2019 to currently right now. 2020, the numbers have grown terribly for our homeless community out there. So I want to try to find a way that we can make housing attainable for those that are unhomed and for those that are home where the rent is affordable for them. Also sustainability, we have no way to recycle here. We're throwing away, and we have so much money that we can be bringing into the city by rewards for being more sustainable in our city. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have opening remarks from Mr. Kamonte Epps.
Hi, my name is Kamonte Epps, and I'm also running for Ward Nine City Council. I am also a Army veteran that was put here in 2016, serving the 1101 Air Assault Division. I am a father and I'm a husband, so I am learning the ropes of Clarksville every single day. It's been a long eight years here, and I've grown to love this community. I've served on various boards such as Ethel Hand's nonprofit organization, Her Story nonprofit organization as well as COO. I've also been a campaign manager for a very successful campaign down in Gwinnett, Georgia. So my platform falls on community engagement, foster care support, and infrastructure. Because we do have an infrastructure problem here, but we also have other problems that need to be addressed, such as our community engagement and our foster children in the system. So I thank you for allowing me to be here today.
Thank you very much. Next, we'll have opening comments from Mr. Jimmy Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jimmy Brown, and I'm running for City Council Ward Nine, just like the other members. I want to thank Leadership Clarksville and the Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event. I'm a graduate of Leadership Clarksville, Class 2011, and I've been in this community since 1989. And I've seen the growth that we've had come here. I currently work for the Sheriff's Office. I've been there 24 years. I did 10 years as a traffic sergeant. So during those times, I really see the infrastructure problems that we have here. We can address some of those with not only trying to get the state to move forward on some projects, but we are addressing some of those with the current City Council. But I'm running to help alleviate some of those problems. Infrastructure cannot just be fixed by building more roads. It's got a variety of things that play into that. Every time there's a crash on the roads, that causes more traffic backups. So whatever we can do to help reduce those number of crashes, the community outreach, getting out and talking to people, finding out what their needs are, those are the things that we want to do. As for the other things, we look at the housing, the homelessness. All these things need addressed, and we've got to make sure that we're spending our citizens' tax dollars the way it should be to address these required issues that we need to address and handle for our citizens. Again, I'm Jimmy Brown, and I'd ask for your vote for City Council Ward Nine.
Thank you very much. And then next, we'll have opening remarks from Mr. Rodney Davis.
Hello to everyone in Ward Nine. First of all, I want to say thank you to Leadership Clarksville and the Clarksville Chamber of Commerce for inviting me here this evening. I really want to reach out, and I want the citizens in Ward Nine to hear me well. What I want to do for Ward Nine, I feel like that because of the high property taxes here in Clarksville, that we need to bring in some new ideas as far as some amusement, such as a museum, a water park, a theater, just for the fact that we have to find a way to pay for things in town. No matter how we keep trying, you'll hear the candidates talk about infrastructure, roads, our schools, sidewalks, greenways, how we need to get that done. We have to bring in revenue from on the outside. There's no way that we can pay for the things that we have to pay for if we don't bring revenue in from the outside. That'll increase our tax money coming in, and I think it'll also give us some entertainment and places for people to go. If they got a water park in Eddieville, Kentucky, they got a casino in Oak Grove, Kentucky, these towns are a lot smaller than the side of Clarksville. So that's what we need. But I'm also, like I said, for those who don't know me, my name is Rodney Davis. Been married for 28 years to my wife Tina Davis. I have four boys and a daughter. I've served on the Tennessee Board of Regents at Dyersburg State Community College. I'm a local business owner. I'm also a school teacher in the Clarksville area, and I'm a public notary here in Clarksville. Thank you. I ask for your vote for City Council Ward Nine. I'm working for the people. I am here for you.
Thank you very much. Now that we have heard opening comments from each of our candidates for Clarksville City Council Ward Number Nine, let's turn to our panelists. First question will come from Mr. Jay Alberta, and the first response will be by Ms. Bridget Childs.
Ms. Childs, we've talked about a lot of issues that you've all brought up. What are two of the specific issues that you think affect your ward? And how would you address those two issues?
Well, one of the main issues that would affect my ward would be sidewalks. Sidewalks. I live off of Needmore, and in some places, there isn't enough room because there's a bridge over the water, so there might not be. But other areas, for instance, the Walmart right there on the corner, there's no way for the people to get from across the street from 101st Whitfield over to the side that Walmart is on without possibly being hit. So people are walking there with their children, so that is one of the issues. And also, rent prices, how they've gone up and people being able to maintain housing.
Thank you. Mr. Epps?
I would also agree that a part of my platform falls on the sidewalk side. There is no safety in regards to the children that go to school in our ward to have somewhere to walk, especially those that are part of the parent responsibility sides. They're forced to walk to school, or they're forced to ride their bikes to school, but they have no safe route to get to these places. Also, I do feel that Ward Nine lacks community engagement. We just had the roundabout completed, and that was something that was bringing the community together and bringing everyone, even outside of our ward, to do something different. And unfortunately, that was shut down and stopped because it is a traffic hazard, yes, but it shows that our ward is looking for things to be involved in and things to feel included with the city. So I do feel that those are the two main concerns in my ward.
Mr. Jimmy Brown?
Thank you. So one of the things that I look at, of course, is, everybody looks at the infrastructure and ways to fix those problems, but along with that is the public safety. Without having the sidewalks in the subdivisions, kids are walking along the side of the street, playing in the streets, and not being able to use their yards to play in. And people speed through our subdivisions, and we need to address that and see what we can do to help bring some more enforcement or modifying the roadways to where it reduces the speeds in the subdivisions. The roundabout is a great asset there. It has helped with the traffic there. Once they finish the rest of the road, that's going to take care of a lot of the traffic issues in that area. There are building sidewalks with it, so that'll help some of that. That will help ease some of the congestion and the safety in that area.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rodney Davis?
We have a lot of problems in Clarksville and some issues in Ward Nine, but the bottom line is that we'll hear each candidate say that we need all these things done, but we cannot do any of this without a way to pay for it. We have to figure out how to pay for what's going on. I mean, we know we need roads, as I said earlier. We know we need infrastructure, as I said earlier. We need new sidewalks. We need higher pay for teachers, firefighters, and policemen, so that we can actually meet the rate of pay for the other cities like Nashville. So we can talk, we can talk the rest of the evening, but the only way we're going to get things done here in Ward Nine and in Clarksville is if we come up with new ideas and we can actually bring a plan and a leadership road to actually put those ideas to work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Susan Zidek, you have the next question, and Mr. Epps, you have the next response.
Thank you. Mr. Epps, can you tell us about some specific life experiences you have had that you believe will help you to be very effective if elected to City Council?
Yes, absolutely. Like I said in my introduction, I have worked on a very successful campaign as campaign manager out in Gwinnett, Georgia. That was also for a City Council position as well, where we were able to sit and meet with a lot of other community leaders to come up with a different solution for that side of town as well. I've also worked as COO or Chief Operating Officer for a nonprofit organization called Her Story, where we focus on getting out young individuals out to vote and to make a difference in their community as well. So I also have been a small business owner, so I do understand the need for connect with different citizens, from small business owners to those who don't own businesses as well. So I have my foot on the ground in different areas that can help me achieve the things I want to bring to City Council.
Mr. Brown?
So what we want to look at is our experiences. Working at the Sheriff's Office for the last 24 years and being a victim of a DUI driver, we look at these things, and that is a safety issue for the community. Graduate of Leadership Clarksville, supporting other nonprofit organizations. I was a child seat technician for about 10 years, just getting out and helping people make sure that their child seats are installed in their car correctly. We make those connections and be of that service to the community, and I want to continue that on the City Council and being that person that they can come to and know that they're going to get some assistance when they come. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
My experience on the Tennessee Board of Regents at Dyersburg State Community College, where I was appointed by the Governor of Tennessee under the Dunn Sunquist, I had the opportunity to visit Washington DC many times, visiting with senators and congressmen, and we actually was working on plans to help to better our community. We got $20 million when John Turner was Congressman in West Tennessee. We got $20 million to help better our community. So as I said, from talking to my constituents door-to-door, some of their concerns, I promised them that what I would do is that I would make sure we had the money to do what needs to be done in Clarksville. So I want to be in a leadership role where I can actually get some grant money also to bring into the city of Clarksville. And I want to work with the City Council and the members that's already there to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Childs?
Yes, so not unfortunately, but I couldn't actually promise my constituents anything, my potential constituents anything, but what I did was, I want to say that we can provide them with attainable housing, affordable housing, where they can stay in the places where they are. We have blighted property here that instead of tearing it down or making a business out of it, why couldn't we redo it and put a family in there? We have so much property that we're building high apartments on when we could actually build places where people can transition, put transitional housing or put actual housing in there and create some generational wealth for people, as opposed to continually having new people end up on the street every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neal Wiggins, you have the next question, and it will go to Mr. Jimmy Brown.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for being here and to help answer some questions for our voters. But I love being a part of this community, and it's also exciting to hear about new ideas. But as we all know, funding is a little tight, so what would you specifically do to generate revenue for Clarksville?
What we have to look at is where the revenue streams are at, what we can do to adjust our expenses. We have to make sure that our budget is as tight as we can, but still provide those services that our community needs and that they really want. The needs come first, the wants come second. The wants we need to look at, see if that's something we really need to do at the time to stay within our budget. Nobody likes to raise taxes. We need to try and work within the budget that our citizens have given us, put us in these positions to work within, so that we can make sure that we're, as a city, living within our means. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I will reiterate what I said earlier. We have to open Clarksville up, bring in new attractions for the city. In order to generate revenue, we have to bring people in. We're spending money, or we're getting the tax money off the citizens that are here in Clarksville. We need some money to come on the outside of Clarksville so we can generate more revenue. As I said earlier, a lot of people have ideas, but nobody will have a way to pay for it. That is the way to pay for it. In any city in America, then that's how they generate tax money. You look at Nashville, you don't want to try to compete with Nashville because Nashville is Nashville. So you want to try to maybe possibly look at an aquarium or something of that nature because you have to bring money to pay for things. Like I say, you can't pay for your household without money, no matter how much you speak about it. You have to have revenue in order to pay for things. So that's the way that I feel like we need to generate revenue in the city of Clarksville.
Ms. Childs?
Actually, I would like to speak with our banker for the city and find out what would be the best way to do that. We have generated some things here. I can't say if it's helpful or hurtful by bringing F&amp;M Stadium, but I would really like to talk to our banker prior to answering that question, just to see what she would say, how it would benefit us the most, and what we could do that would benefit the city the most. Thank you.
Mr. Epps?
I do believe that our city needs to open up for attraction. That falls into what I feel about community engagement. There are smaller towns around us that hold small festivals and small gatherings that bring in outside tourism, and I feel that a way that Clarksville can bring in extra money to help fund some of the projects that we need is to bring in more smaller festivals or smaller attractions to gather towards the younger audience that would take the trip to come to Clarksville. I've seen the differences that just a small roundabout has erupted around the country. People from different states want to drive all the way to Clarksville to do a lap around a roundabout. So I feel that if that is something that can make a difference, other things that don't cost as much money to bring to the city can also add to those things.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Alberta, you have the next question. It will go to Mr. Rodney Davis.
Mr. Davis, we've talked a lot about finance. Y'all have talked about money coming in. Let's talk about the funding for departments right now. What one department do you feel is not getting its fair share of funds, and which one would you give money to?
I have a few, but I will name just one. I feel like the police department does not have enough funding, based on the fact that we have a lot of traffic issues, and it takes the police officers a while to get across town, and the firefighters have to wait until the police get there before they can do anything. I think that we need to use some of the money that I was talking about to actually get like some police motorcycles, since the town is growing so fast, so that we can make sure that we got public safety. So I think it's very vital within Clarksville that we need, we're a growing city now, and we're a big city whether we want to realize that or not. But I feel like with the traffic issues, that we have to fund the police department so that they can get from point A to point B quickly because our citizens' lives are at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Childs?
That's a loaded question. There's a lot of answers to that. Wow. I'm going to go with what Mr. Davis said as well. So we are a little big town now. We are the fourth largest city in the state of Tennessee, and we're growing. And our emergency services, not only do they need through fairs to get around, they need to get around faster. Some of us complain that they don't come to our areas fast enough, which is true, yet how can they, with a car, and then we're blocking the traffic? We're blocking them with our cars, or we're running lights, or what have you. So I believe that we need to provide more funding, not just for all of our emergency services. Because I have seen ambulance come to a complete halt on the road. It's unbelievable. Thank you.
Mr. Epps?
While I do agree with the police department and our emergency services, I have noticed a small imbalance between our community services department. We do have a plethora of community centers here, and I feel as a city that's connected to an Army base, where there's many families coming in with teenagers and younger children, we could use some of this budget to bring programs and to bring activities for these teenagers and these children to stay busy and to stay occupied outside of contributing to the crime in Clarksville. We don't have many things that teenagers can do, and as Dr. Childs said, we are a little big town, so we do need things that appeal to all ages and all demographics over just emergency services and things that our older constituents might need.
And Mr. Jimmy Brown?
So of course, like some of the others have mentioned, public safety is a big part of it. With the police department, they have a community engagement team or a unit. They also have the JET team, which is their juvenile engagement team. We want to make sure that these positions are staffed, because if they can get those positions staffed and stay in the community, make those contacts, make sure the public trust the law enforcement, that's going to make a big difference. And our community, I feel, does trust our law enforcement. We've got to make sure our firefighters have the equipment they need, but if we put more officers on the road, they don't have to respond as far to get to the cause because they're going to be more available in those areas. We do need to make sure that our communities have events that they can go to that gives purpose to be here, that brings people in to look at our community, and that also brings tax dollars in.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zidek, you have the next question, and it will go to Ms. Childs for the first response.
Thank you. Ms. Childs, there are a number of functions and departments that are consolidated between the city and the county. Are there other functions or programs or departments that you think we should be considering or looking at for consolidation?
Yes, so I believe the wraparound services for our juveniles and for people that are coming out of homelessness or people that are just having issues in general. I think we need more wraparound services with our mental health facilities, with the schools, with the churches. They need more, there need more people in those areas, they need more funding in that area, so that when they come out of these situations, that there's a total, there's a complete circle finished. They need to be able to get the services that they need as far as finances. They need to be able to get the services that they need as far as food, mental health, healthcare, whatever it is that they need. We need more wraparound services for them, parental assistance when the child comes out of a juvenile court. We just need more services for them, more wraparound services.
Mr. Epps?
I do feel that foster care support is something that could use a lot more support here in county and city. As a foster parent myself with a teenager, I have seen that there is a lack of resources for these children, mental health, clinical, and just all-around services that these children need. They struggle with schooling, they struggle with just adjusting to new areas in the city, and there are no programs here that have been something that they can lean on to help them adjust to these things. The social workers and the caseworkers are worn thin, and they have no support as well from half of the places that we're supposed to have the support from. And along with the foster parents, there is a lack of support all around through the foster care system and DCS.
Mr. Brown?
So we're talking about combining agencies is the way I'm understanding it. What county departments and city departments that could be merged together? Without a consolidated government, it's not going to happen. There's city departments that have city regulations that are imposed by the City Council that are totally different than what the county commission imposes for the county, like building codes or zoning issues. A lot of those issues, the only way to really be able to solve that would be a consolidated government, and that's just not where we're going right now. We're looking at our city departments and what services they provide, and that's what we need to focus on to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our community and our citizens. So what departments might be combined, I don't really, at this time, I can't think of any that really would be feasible to combine. that really would be feasible to combine.
And Mr. Rodney Davis?
I don't know as far as city departments, but I do believe that, um, the city of, um, Clarksville, Clarksville need to work more closely with Austin P. University. I think we need to stop these developers from throwing up property off of every exit in Clarksville, Clarksville and houses. And we need to turn that, that prime land into technology centers for our kids' future and possibly even help the veteran, veterans when they get out of the military. We have to stop thinking that it's okay for everybody just throwing property everywhere and have to have a plan. And these things have to be paid for. And if we can put up, um, technology centers, that, that will actually help us maybe develop ways to deal with like, um, green, greenway situation. A lot of communities was asking me about doing, uh, making sure our greenways are taken care of. And not only that, it's just necessary in a city this size for our future to have technology centers here in Clarksville. We have to get prepared for this new AI thing, thing that's going on here. We have to get prepared for that. So we have to look out for the future with, uh, like AI technology, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil Wiggins, your question will go to Mr. Camonte Epps.
Mr. Epps, I love Clarksville. So it's been said that Clarksville is one of the best places to live. What, what can we do? Well, Clarkville is one of the best places to live, but Clarkville is also attracting retirees. What can, or what will you do to continue to make Clarksville attractive to retirees?
I think that Clarksville needs to be more inclusive. I do believe that, um, before Clarksville was something considered a retirement town. When I was here stationed in the military, it was very quiet, very daunting. And a lot of retired individuals did want to move here. And now that it is becoming a growing city and more congested, they are starting to feel a little more pushed out. So we need to implement some things to make Clarksville seem a little more inclusive and demographically correct. Um, it's not just a city just for retirees. It's not just a city just for Gen Z or millennials. It's a city for everybody. So I would work with different parts of the government to see what we can do to make sure that everybody feels included here in Clarksville and continue to grow.
Mr. Brown?
So here in Clarksville, we have a wide variety of people from all over the world, really. And the quality of life is what we need to look at and that is what helps keep people here. You know, if they have jobs, we make sure we have jobs here that people getting out of the military or retiring or, or even just moving here because this community is a likable area, that we have things for them to do when they get here. You know, businesses look at that when they look at setting up in a location is what amenities does your community offer their employees? So we want to make sure that we have those amenities here and that the quality of life is a, a reason to stay here for when you do either get out of the military or just to move here in general. So we want to make sure that we have those, those things available to our community to make it more likeable area.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Clarksville, as he said, is a great, great city. It really is with a lot of opportunity. I once rode through Clarksville and seen a sign that said, "The Gateway to the South." I moved here 10 years ago because of that sign. Not only that, I feel like Clarksville is one of the most, has to be one of the most racially diverse towns pretty much in Tennessee for the fact that we got Wilma Rudolph running right through the center of Clarksville. And I came here when I was 18 years old to take a test for, for the state. And when I seen Wilma Rudolph sign, I said, "I feel like I'm home." And I lived in West Tennessee. But back to your question, I really feel like the technology centers will help bring in new white collar jobs. That a way your retirees will actually stand in Clarksville anyway because they have, they have the money to stay in Clarksville. That'll give them more income with white collar jobs. So I feel like the technology centers off the exit, working with Austin P. Will give us more technology jobs to bring in like the white collar workers and that'll keep them in the great city of Clarksville. Thank you.
Ms. Childs?
So Clarksville is a wonderful city to live in, but I would like to say that the sign says, "The Gateway to the New South." Not to the south, it said to the new south. So the way, I, as a veteran, the reason why I stayed was so that my children could graduate from the same high school. Not because this was a retirement town. It's a town that retire, that we stay and retire because our children, we don't want our children to go to, uh, so many different schools. So that's why we stay. We stay because of that. But the problem is when the kids grow up, there's, when they graduate from Austin P. or when they graduate from these schools, there's no jobs for them. There's really no jobs for us all the time. But what we do is we live off of a, uh, retirement check or some live off retirement and disability. So there needs to be something here for a reason for them to stay, a reason for, for them to want to stay and a reason for people to want to move here. Jobs will do that. Things to do will do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jay Alberta, your question will go to Mr. Jimmy Brown.
Mr. Brown, uh, city council recently passed, um, new permit fees for building, uh, starting July the first. Those fees are substantially higher than cities our size, even Knoxville. Uh, do you think that these new fees are going to push away new growth in our city? Or do you think the fees, uh, should stand as they are?
The new fees were designed, the way I understand it, to help bring in some of those funds that we need for the infrastructure and to keep our community going. But you also have to look at what those new fees do to the cost of the house. Those houses now are going to cost more because those builders are going to pass that cost on to the person buying the house. So we're building a lot of houses in this community. Where, if you stop building, the cost of what we have is, is going to just skyrocket. So we want to try and make sure that we're trying to keep the cost as low as we can to, for someone to purchase a house. Because that person purchases that house, well, another house becomes available. You make that competition in the market to where the cost go down on the housing so that it makes it more affordable. If you don't have the housing available, the costs go through the roof and you have no housing for low income.
Mr. Davis?
The, the fees on the permit, well, our fees is going to continue, continue to go up for this reason. Because we have no way to pay for things. As, as you listen over the evening here, nobody has gave, given you anything or any ideas to pay for anything. But everybody has a lot of, um, answers for everything, but they don't give you a way to pay for it. But back to the fees, the fees are going to continue to go up just like they do on the property taxes. As I said, because we don't have a way to pay for it. So continue to expect the fees to go up if we don't find out, figure out a way to pay for things here in Clarksville. That's why we need to bring in new attractions like an aquarium, aquarium or museum or theme park or something of that nature. Because you, as you hear tonight, we're trying to figure out ways to pay for things. And that is the way to pay for it. And that is a simple way and probably the only way. And if anybody has anything better, I would like to hear it from my candidates.
Ms. Childs?
Yes, so I do think that we need something here to attract people and to keep people here as far as whatever it might be, whether it's an aquarium, whether it's a theme park, whether it's another holiday world, um, I don't know. But the fees should, right now, should stay the same because what we're doing, what we, it seems like we're doing is we're competing with California and New York. And from just speaking with people, a lot of people have migrated here from these large towns, buying up the land or the prop, and the prices of everything goes up so, so great because of that. And we can't compete with Nashville right now. We can't. So absolutely, we do need to bring something here, something, you know, an aquarium, um, like Mr. Davis said, or a theme park, something that keep people here, something to attract them to come here to stay. But what that's going to mean is more hotels, more Airbnbs. Thank you.
And Mr. Epps?
So for right now, I do believe that the fees should stay the same. Um, because these fees seem like a way to weed out those who are not serious about the growth of Clarksville. We don't want just those getting permits to just throw up just anything. So with the higher fees, it seems as though they are trying to make sure you're serious about your investment and wanting to figure out a way to balance out what Clarksville needs and what small business owners or possibly bigger business owners are wanting to bring to the city. So until we find a way to bring more money into the city, as, uh, my opponents are pointing out, theme parks, aquariums, or even small festivals, we will see these fees rise. And until then, there's nothing that we can change about it for right now.
Thank you very much. Ms. Zidek, you have the next question and it should go to Rodney Davis.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davis, uh, if elected, you will be the voice of the people in your ward. What do you propose to do to stay in communication with the people in the ward and to keep them involved in planning for the future?
I would do the same thing that I've been doing every day. I go talk to my neighbors door to door. I talk to people. Outside of that, I will have a Facebook page where they can engage with me on the, um, Facebook page. I will also have community forums on a monthly basis so that I can ensure that I'm hearing their every concern and any issue that they have or any concerns, I want to be able to address them immediately. Not only that, but I want them to know that I have a working relationship with the other members of the, of the city council. Because I feel like one of the things that's going on is because it's not just about reaching out to your community, but we need to have a good working relationship with our fellow council members. Because in order to get things done, we have to work together. We have to stop the, the, um, the tag team, the football games, all those type of things. People, lives are at risk. So need, we need to ensure that we take our people's lives seriously. We need to get the property taxes lowered along with all the other things that I have mentioned earlier.
And Ms. Childs?
Thank you. So I, my plan was to have a, also a Facebook page. I can't necessarily go to everyone's door again during this time, but I will make myself accessible to them. Even, even if it's via a phone number, if they need me to talk to me that way. But I would like to make sure that they know that I am still the same person that, then that I am now. I'm not going to say anything that I can't produce and I'm not going to make any promises that I can't, um, that I can't keep. So I will make myself accessible with, um, a Facebook forum. Thank you.
Mr. Epps?
Uh, as of right now, I plan to continue doing what I've been doing so far. Um, boots on the ground. I try, I am an active volunteer, so I volunteer as many places as I can. And I also make sure that I hold my own volunteer events to make sure the community feels engaged as well. I also will continue my Facebook, uh, page open for those who like to not come out in person, but to text or, or email or anything of that sort. I also have a dedicated phone line just to this campaign. And if, uh, I am successful to me being a city councilman. So I do want to make sure that the community will know that I am available at any time and I am always accessible. So if I'm either out or I'm at home, uh, you can reach me any way possible.
And Mr. Brown?
So what we'll do is we'll make sure that we stay in contact with those citizens. Uh, to make sure that we have, you know, just like the Facebook, you can have, you know, meetings on there. We, but we want to do subdivision meetings, you know, to find out in those subdivisions, what is their specific needs that we can address. Then we can get that information out. We'll also have get togethers to where we can go over what is on the agenda for the city council. We have a newsletter that can go out to send to everybody. But the big thing is, is staying informed and making sure that our constituents are able to reach us. So we want to make sure that we have those resources available and those open channels of communication. So we'll keep doing that and continue that until, until we don't have any communication, I guess. But, you know, there'll always be lines open to communicate with your representatives.
Thank you very much. Mr. O'Neil Wiggins, you have the final question from our panelists to our candidates and it will go to Ms. Bridget Childs.
Ms. Bridget Childs, so the Clarksville Montgomery County school system consumes a large portion of the county's budget. What do you think are the issues relating to that? And why does the school system consume so much of the budget? And what will you do to try to resolve that?
Mr. O'Neil, right now, I really would have to look more into that, honestly. I can't, that's, that's such a, a loaded question because the school system does need quite a bit of the money. But I can't tell you right now how I would actually be able to curtail that, um, what's happening right now. I, I, I'm, I just, I just couldn't. I would have to actually do more, more research and talk to more people about that. Thank you.
Mr. Epps?
My first plan of action would be to gather a small meeting with possibly the school district. Let, uh, let's sit down and see where our budget is going in these schools. Is it going to the sports teams? Is it going to new facilities? Um, are the teachers being paid fairly? So I, I would never want to take the budget away from the schools because the school, our children deserve to have the best education possible. But I would like to figure out where our budget is being allocated, where they have so much money and how is it making a difference to these children? Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
So like you said in the question, the school system is funded by the county, not the city council. The city council doesn't fund the school system. So we would have to work with our county commission and our counterparts on that, who they are the ones that approve the funding for the school system. But we can talk to our school board representatives. They're the ones that control the school board, the school's budget. So as the city, we don't have that budget line to fund. It would be the county commission. But we can keep those lines of communication open with our county commissioners and the school board just to let them know what our constituents are thinking. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
I kind of want to clear that up. Now, our, uh, city taxes that I suggested earlier, earlier about bringing, bringing in the amusement, now our city taxes and our county taxes does go to the payment of the, uh, school system. Now, they do get that and our kids are, are, are our most important commodity. So whatever money it takes, then we need to make sure it's available to our kids. How we get that done is by what I proposed to you all earlier, by bringing in extra tourists and visitors, visitors into, um, Clarksville. No matter how we have to get it done, it's a must. Our teachers do deserve to be paid as a teacher in the Montgomery County school system. They do deserve to be paid more. But the most important thing is to you bring in new tax dollars so that we can take care of our, um, kids. No matter what the needs are, it must be met and we have to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our questions from our panelists. We will now turn to closing comments from each of our candidates for the Clarksville City Council Ward number nine. We will hear first from Mr. Rodney Davis.
As I said to you all earlier in Ward nine, I want to be there for you. I'm the candidate that wants to get your property taxes lowered. I'm the candidate that wants to make sure that you have new sidewalks so that your kids can get to school safe. I'm the candidate that wants to build new technology centers so we can bring in white collar jobs so that we can help our people coming into the community and our retirees. I'm the candidate that wants to generate new tax money to re, to build your new roads and infrastructure. I'm the candidate that's not just simply talking about it, but I actually am the candidate that gave you a way to pay for it. As I said earl, said earlier, or off of, um, Ms. Childs, we need, we do need affordable housing here in Clarksville. I do want you to know I am for affordable housing. But we cannot get affordable housing if we keep allowing the developers here in Clarksville to just put up any house that they want at any time on any corner. So we must take care of the problem of affordable housing, housing. Because as the property taxes go up here in Clarksville, we have to realize we have people on fixed incomes who do, do not have the money to also be able to continue to afford the homes that they're currently in, let alone getting an affordable home. So we have to look out for each other individually and I'm here for each one of you. As I was going through my, um, ward, I actually had a lady come to me and she asked about the greenways. She said, "Sir, can you please make sure, if you can, that we have something for special ed kids?" As a past teacher with special ed kids, that kind of touched me. So I want to ask the citizens of Ward nine to elect me so that I can help do all the things that I want to get done for you. I ask for your vote in Ward nine and let's make Clarksville even better than what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll hear closing comments from Mr. Jimmy Brown.
Well, I would just want to thank y'all for tuning in to watch this. Well, I would just want to thank y'all for tuning in to watch this and to stay informed on your voting to make sure that you are picking the correct person for the position in that voting ward. I want to work for those people in Ward Nine. Not only just that, but the people in Ward Nine traverse throughout this city, so we have to look at the entire community as for what we're doing to protect our citizens. We want to make sure that they do have the roads, you know, where we can have roads built, added on. When we build new roads, make sure they have those sidewalks that are in there. All this takes money. So, if we look at trying to cut our property taxes, what are we going to use to fund all these new services that people want? So, we got to stay and work within our budget and do what we can to produce what our citizens want as well without raising their taxes. So, we want to make sure that we're providing those services. We need to look at what we are doing every day to make sure that we are conserving our money that the taxpayers give us to make sure that we're providing those services. I'm a lifelong resident of Tennessee. I've been in Clarksville since 1989, as I said. You know, I've been around this community with the growth that we've seen. I don't see the growth going away, so we want to make sure that we are providing the services that our citizens need. We want to make sure that they have jobs available for them that brings people to our community that that can make a difference and have those jobs which those jobs bring more people, which can cause issues, but those also bring a better tax base. So, I appreciate your vote for City Council Ward Nine, and I'm looking forward to working for you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear closing comments from Mr. Kamonte Epps.
I just want to first start off by saying thank you, Leadership Clarksville, and thank you, Chamber of Commerce, for allowing us to come and speak about all of our platforms and where we stand in this election cycle. I do think that Clarksville needs a new vision and a new voice. We need someone who is going to take time and listen to the constituents and listen to what we actually need in this city. Although I do agree about the taxes and affordable housing, we talk a lot about money, and we don't talk enough about our children and what they need. We need to make sure that these children don't feel that they are unheard. These caseworkers don't feel that they are overworked. These teachers don't feel that they are underpaid and underappreciated. Money makes the city go around, yes, but they're not the only thing in this city. So, we do need to make sure we're paying attention to everything and everybody here. I'm not just running for City Council Ward Nine. I'm running for the entire city of Clarksville, so I will appreciate your vote for City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll hear final closing remarks from Ms. Bridget Childs.
Thank you again, the Chamber of Commerce and to Leadership Clarksville for having us here, all of us here on today and hearing our voices and for you for tuning in, for listening to us. We are a wonderful city here in Clarksville, and we want to keep people here in Clarksville. And we don't want people to leave because there's nothing for them to do. We don't want people to leave because there is there are no jobs for them. We want people to stay here in this city. We want to raise our children here. We want you to raise your children here, but to do that, we need to make sure that it's affordable for them. So, if we're going to increase and and continue to get bigger like Knoxville or Nashville, we need to provide services even greater than those cities right there because we are greater or great as they are. So, we need to make sure that we can provide affordable housing. We need to make sure we can keep people that are in homes already where they are able to stay. We need to be able to halt or pause on the developers coming in, like Mr. Davis said, putting up homes in every corner of the city where the children have nowhere to go, nowhere to go at all. There is a park in Gallatin, just an hour away, that is provided for two two parks that provided for children, like Mr. Davis said, that have special needs, and we need parks like that here. We have a broken down park at Heritage Park. Something is always broken there. One of the one of the swings has is always broken. So, I want to be able to do that for you and help you and listen to you and grow the city the way that you want it grown, not just the way that I want it grown, and I will partner with and support any one of these candidates. If you choose, if you don't choose me, I will partner with them to make sure that these things still happen regardless of who's in the seat. Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Bridget Childs. I'm looking forward to your vote for Clark for city ward, City Council Ward Nine. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to each of our candidates for sharing your time and your thoughts with us here today and for being willing to serve our community as elected officials and in particular representing Ward Nine on the Clarksville City Council. Thank you each very, very much. Remember, early voting for the federal, state, and city of Clarksville General Election will take place October the 16th through the 31st. Now, the location will be at the Election Commission Office. That's at 350 Pageant Lane. Once again, don't forget, Election Day is Tuesday, November the 5th. We have a responsibility, a right, and an opportunity to be there. Thanks also to our panelists, Mr. Jay Alberta, Ms. Susan Zidek, Mr. O'Neal Wiggins. Thank you all very much for your insightful questions, and thanks also to our timekeeper once again, Mr. Phil Harpel. Thanks to the staff here at the Customs House Museum and Cultural Center for hosting today's forum, and thanks also to Leadership Clarksville and your Clarksville Area Chamber of Commerce as well as Rick Goodwin Productions for making this forum possible. Until next time, I'm Van Stokes. Thank you for watching.
For current and exclusive content, subscribe to CDE Lightband, connecting you at the speed of light.